Initially, you did support us for five years of funding and that agreement has been recently renewed with all seven units from Barrington to Digby. So, thanks very much for that. I certainly recognize that that is a vote of confidence and trust on your part towards our organization. So, thank you for that. And I was asked to come to you today and tell you a little bit about what the Western REN does. And we thought it was a great timing because we actually had one specific project that we wanted to present to you. So, that's what we'll be doing shortly. So, maybe just to start off, it's kind of a high level. What is the REN? What do we do? We do have a private sector-led board. So, we have 11 members on our board currently who are from Barrington straight through to Digby. And of course, our mandate is regional economic development. So, what we're doing is meant to be in the best interest of the entire region. And it's the whole approach that if we're doing something in Barrington, then that impact is going to be felt as far as Digby as well. So, what's good for one end of the region is good for the other and certainly the health of the region as well. So, some of the challenges that we're facing in Western Nova Scotia are fundamental barriers to economic development. So, I think it's really important to take that into consideration. So, before we can even do proper economic development, we have to make sure that we have the tools to do so. So, a lot of these challenges that we face in our region are what you're going to see in our strategy and our business plan year over year. And these challenges, these barriers are significant, very complex. They require multiple partners at the table to address. So, we're looking at barriers such as employers finding the workers that they need to both work in the business and grow the business. We're looking at some barriers around infrastructure. We recently collaborated with five municipalities in the region to work on an internet solution. So, we want to make sure that everybody has access to reliable internet. And what we're here to talk to you today as well in more depth is going to be around the access to reliable energy as well. So, our strategic focus is certainly long-term. We're looking to increase investment in private and public sectors and addressing those talent needs. So, that's what you're going to see in our strategy and subsequent business plan. So, we have multiple partners, as I mentioned, but we do work very closely with private sector and private sector. So, we have a number of programs that we're currently delivering. Some of them you may be familiar with, some of them not so, maybe not so familiar. So, I wanted to very briefly run through them. So, we have our core program, our navigational weight linking program called Business Now. And that's designed to help businesses navigate resources to address some issues that they may be facing currently or to uncover opportunities and essentially help them grow. And that was the primary program that we used to reach out to businesses at the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis because that was a time where there were programs rolling out almost daily and it was information that was just constantly coming out and being updated. So, we proactively, along with a great team from across the region, including your EDO, Natalie Smith, proactively reached out to businesses across the region to help them navigate some of that program. We also have a connector program, which is an intentional networking program that's designed to uncover the hidden job market in the region. We have an immigration program that helps employers connect with an international workforce. And we also have a continuous recruitment program. And that one is we work with companies to help identify waste and eliminate waste, which can happen in multiple aspects of the business. And the results are increased efficiencies and bottom line impact. And we also have a succession program. So, we're working with a number of businesses across the region who are interested in selling to give them access to a succession platform, a succession matching platform, where matchmaking between buyers and sellers can occur. Evan, I don't know if you have the ability to share your screen or not, but I did have a slide that underlines some of our outcomes or accomplishments. But a couple of things that I wanted to highlight to you as well. Connector program, just coming back to that one for a minute because I wanted to maybe highlight some of the examples on how this programming would affect the town specifically. So, the connector program has really become a phenomenal tool to retain newcomers to the region, recent grads and boomers. So, it really complements doctor recruitment efforts. So, it would be two more slides if you're able to click through them, the last one. So, it's coming back to doctor retention. It's so important for family members of newcomers to feel connected to the community and start to build a network. And hopefully, the end goal is to find employment and increase the attachment to the region. So, we have seen thousands of doctors from this program and we have had success in that area. So, I thought it was really important to highlight that one. And just another example, I think there are multiple. Time is short today is the immigration program that we have. So, we're partnering the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Program. And you can see currently, we have it sits at around 69. There could be a few more companies in the region who have been designated through that program. And there are 102 physicians who are currently in, which are currently endorsed, which means that there are 102 individuals who have the ability to come to the region and bring their families with them as well. So, from the town's perspective, from a planning perspective, that information is really critical. And it's critical to share and keep those lines of communication open. So, how to stay informed on what we're doing? We communicate to on multiple levels. Again, private sector, but communicating with you, the public sector, both our stakeholders and partners depending on the project. We do, I prepare a annual report that is presented to my board quarterly and is shared with you through your, I think through your LOC representative, but I think we share it to the entire, all the council members as well after each quarter. And I checked in before the meeting and you're due to receive one shortly. I believe the LOC is meeting in the near future and then that report will be there as well. Presentations to the LOC and to councils. You will see us travel across the region to do presentations anytime we have something that we'd like you to be aware of. Or if there's any request, any program you'd like us to do a deeper dive on, we're all the positive come in and do that. We have newsletters that we put out. Our website is a great source of information. We have our strategy, our business plan, our annual reports are all up there. And our social media, the content that you see on social media is mainly targeted towards our private sector clientele. But I really encourage you to follow us on, like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, and you'll find lots of information there as well. So, getting back to economic development barriers, we have issues with our electrical grid in the region. We have antiquated lines with little capacity, which leads to multiple service interruptions and it impacts local residents, local businesses, and local industry just overall. And it's proven to be a barrier to attracting new investment to the region. And it's something that we've decided strategically to spend a significant amount of time to try and address the situation so we can strive forward and really get some initiatives going. So, we'd like to present to you a study that we've recently completed on energy in the Western Region. And I think Evan is probably going to present it to you. We had a recording. I don't know if that will work. So, we'll do that and then we'll have time for discussion at the end.
Thanks, Angela.
So, as I mentioned, we're at the recording. I'm going to just see if the audio comes through. Maybe I could get someone to just, maybe Angela Wick can pop her head if she can hear it when the time comes. If not, I'll have to read through the slides, but that's no issue. Any sound? I'm guessing no. In that case, I will just walk us through it. It's possible that if I don't go at the same speed that I had recorded this in, that I will jump the slides around a little bit. So, please bear with me. All right. So, can everyone hear me okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Perfect. Hello, councillors. My name's Evan Nemez. I'm an Economic Development Officer for the Western Region Enterprise Network. In this presentation, I would like to introduce you to the Western Regional Energy Investment Plan. Want to head aside because of the timings? This is going to be a... There we go. All right. The transmission lines that enter the Western Region through the Valley Corridor are 69 kilovolt lines from the Tremont slash Greenwood area and onward. These 69 kilovolt lines are the red lines on the image on your screen and they have the smallest capacity of the lines listed in the image. These lines, in addition to the blue 138 kilovolt lines along the south shore, are responsible for the delivery of power through the local power grid that powers the region's households, businesses, and institutions. They also allow for the transmission of energy generated in the region to other areas that need it in the province and beyond. The 69 kilovolt lines running from Tremont to Yarmouth have limited capacity remaining on them for the transmission of energy. This limited capacity has the potential to limit the expansion of existing businesses within the region and the attraction of new businesses to the region. In addition, this area has substantial green energy opportunities with strong coastal winds, large powerful tides, and some of the highest photovoltaic potential in Canada. With limited space on the transmission lines for the export of energy, there is limited potential to take advantage of these opportunities. Aside from the status of the transmission system, a community energy planning document from the town of Bridgewater identified the cost of energy in the community as $89 million in 2016 alone, with potential for energy efficiency models to save businesses and residents of combined $2 billion by 2050. So, that's our rationale. In February 2019, the Western REN, with funding support from the Department of Energy and Line's Low Carbon Community Fund, contracted consultants at Sustainable Solutions Group, or SSG, to assist with the development of an energy investment plan for the region. Their objectives were to create a baseline of energy consumption to inform in decision-making, to identify opportunities for energy efficiency improvements for existing and future buildings, to identify opportunities for green energy generation and storage within the region, and identify opportunities for district energy and heating, providing a market for waste wood from the forestry industry. And there's an image of the front cover of the screen there. Using a variety of data sources, including Property Evaluation Services Corporation, Nova Scotia Power Inc., Fuel Sales Data, Waste Check, and our municipal partners, the consultant said SSG estimated that energy purchases in the Western Region in 2016 amounted to $327 million, with the average household spending $5,800 on energy in its various forms, such as gas, diesel, firewood, furnace oil, and electricity. If opportunities can be found to reduce expenditures on energy generated outside of the region, this can help to keep those funds in our local economy and the residents and businesses within the region. The highest energy demand in the region was attributed to both land and marine transportation, representing a combined 68%. As such, gasoline and diesel represents the highest sources of energy in the region. Electricity amounted to just 15% of energy demand in the region for 2016, though that percentage is expected to climb drastically over time with greater adoption of heat pump technologies and electric vehicles. Acknowledging that the region's electricity demands will only grow over time, there are two means to create space on the transmission lines. The first is to reduce demand by increasing energy efficiency and energy conservation at businesses, institutions, municipal buildings, and households. This can be done by improving insulation, installing more energy-efficient appliances, adopting more energy-efficient heat generators such as heat pumps, and using smart technology to optimize the times of day that the energy is used. While there are expenditures required to create these efficiencies, they will directly translate to cost savings over time. The second method is to increase the supply of energy by creating more green energy generation sites within the Western Region, such as solar, tidal, wind, biogas, or district energy. This too will require expenditures, but they will translate to revenue over time. The additional benefits to these actions are that they would reduce the reliance on energy imported into our region and thereby reduce the likelihood and duration of outages. The consultant said SSG identified a list of 26 energy opportunities that could improve energy efficiency and increase energy generation, all while lowering greenhouse gas emissions. They have been consolidated into the categories, which I will quickly touch on. Building retrofits and energy efficiency upgrades such as insulation improvements, water efficiency improvements, and heat pumps would lower the total energy required to heat buildings. Cellulose insulation made from waste wood or recycled newspaper has similar thermal properties to fiberglass and can be blown into wall cavities or installed as that. Waste wood typically has a value of $110 per tonne as fuel, while cellulose insulation is worth 10 tonnes in amount. This creates a new market for waste wood. Electric vehicles will increase the reliance on electricity as a fuel source, but the efficiencies gained from the above two opportunities will more than compensate for them. Further, they are typically charged overnight, reducing the demand on peak hours of electricity generation. Hydrogen is useful as a fuel, and it has a future potential for the high energy demand of the marine transportation sector. During periods of peak generation of renewable energy, you can translate that energy that's not being used into this hydrogen fuel using the method called electrolysis. So, the figure that's on the screen right now displays that the total energy consumed with these energy efficiency actions that are implemented will roughly have the total amount of energy being consumed in the region. The clean energy scenario within the Western Region Energy Investment Plan envisions the installation of 221 megawatts of combined wind and tidal energy and 160 megawatts of solar photovoltaic energy primarily for local consumption. Each installation would be accompanied by energy storage such as batteries to balance the inconsistent generation characteristics of the renewable technologies. The winds don't always flow, the sun doesn't always shine, and the tides flow for times a day. A share of the solar photovoltaic capacity will be installed on homes and businesses through a program such as net meters. Organic waste from the agriculture, fisheries, and forestry sectors has the potential to be used in an anaerobic digest filter, similar to the facility that had been running in Waymouth. It is estimated that the equivalent of approximately 300,000 litres of diesel could be generated per year from a site similar in scale to that in Waymouth. The figure on the screen displays that the total energy generated within the region will dramatically increase as the need for electricity increases over time. By 2050, it projects a scenario in which all of the energy that the region needs is generated within the region itself. Each of the opportunities in the Western Region Energy Investment Plan projects a net change in person years of employment or job opportunities associated with them. In total, it is estimated that there is the potential to generate almost 4,800 person years of employment by 2050, or an average of 160 jobs per year. While you'll notice that the transportation sector implies that there would be a rather steep decline in employment that is primarily reflected in the actual manufacturing of vehicles and those manufacturing positions down in the region. So, it would not have a net difference here. These jobs would often, sorry, the jobs that are highlighted on the figure there on the screen would often be the sort that would require post-secondary education, which would provide an opportunity for the region's Nova Scotia Community College, Birch Campus, and University St. Don to develop and train that workforce. Switch for me. There is a combined total of 140 megawatts of energy generation facilities within the Western Region now, but there is room for more. There's an appetite globally right now for green energy, and the federal government has been putting some money on the table. There's funding available at present through the Federal Investing in Canada Plan with a total of $828 million specific for Nova Scotia. There's also the Nova Scotia Fund, which has funding available for green energy projects in an amount of $500,000 or up to $3 million per project. And there's the Federal Build Canada Small Community Fund, which has $42.6 million for Nova Scotia for green energy projects. So, in closing, the opportunities within the plan is implemented, have the potential to lower energy expenditure through energy efficiency, increase energy revenues through the generation of green energy and storage of green energy. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Support our forestry and fisheries industries by offering markets for their waste streams, improve the region's energy security by utilizing locally generated energy, and create space on the transmission lines for the export of energy to other regions. The Western REN released a second request for proposals in August 2020 for the implementation of the actions recommended in this plan. The work was awarded... Sorry. The work was awarded to MCC Energy Strategies Inc. Their role will be to identify the top two to four opportunities located within the plan, engage with relevant stakeholders such as private sector, industry organizations, Nova Scotia Power, et cetera, and identify relevant funding opportunities or financial instruments, then to submit applications for those funds on our behalf. So, this work is already underway and will continue into the winter. And with that, I thank you for your time, and we're open to any questions you may have.
Thank you both. Any questions for these folks? And if we get home and we find something, everybody knows how to find you, that's for sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor has...
If something comes to mind later on, by all means, reach out.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor has questions?
Good presentations. I'm just wondering maybe to you, Evan, and have Jeff sitting here. And we're partners with the municipal units with the project in Hebron. Has there ever been any other talk, Jeff, on how we can build on that foundation out there? Seems like there is money. I know it sounded like a lot of money, but once you divvy it up with 50 other municipal units and maybe the province and some private sector people, I know it doesn't end up being that much money. But is there an opportunity for us to take advantage of that?
So, the project we did out in Wellington with the turbines, that was a comfit project. And so, we worked together on that. We co-invested in the capital and we share the proceeds, which will pay back and then generate profit. The opportunity there was the comfit rate. So, we could put up turbines tomorrow, but there isn't the same, you wouldn't get the same rate paid to you by Nova Scotia Power. And so, the economics would look quite different. More recently than that, we've worked with the units and Area, the same, well, Area has helped us do the solar proposals. So, that was similar to comfit, but different. Nova Scotia Power put out a bid process. So, they said if any public sector organizations want to bid to provide solar electricity to us for the next 20 years, tell us how much you need to get per kilowatt, let's say. And so, Area and their engineers helped us look at our various sites and put in bids that were appropriate for each site based on the cost of construction and development and the size of the installation. We were successful. The town has installations at Mariner Center, at the Public Works Building, and at the compost facility. I know Argyle has an installation, I think, at the Wedgeport Fire Hall. And the District of Yarmouth has an installation at the CSC building in the Business Park. So, we did work together on those, although we individually owned them and invested and will reap the benefits. It was a collaborative effort to work with Area. So, I guess what I'm saying, the short answer is, as opportunities present themselves with incentives to make, to make us, I guess, make the risk profile, the payback, look attractive to us, then we will bring those opportunities back to council for consideration. But, and the good folks at Area, I have to say, they've got the technical ability and capacity in-house, and they're willing to share that with other municipalities to accelerate this green energy work. If they see an opportunity, I know Aaron Long will be picking up the phone and calling us and assisting us in how we can buy into whatever program comes up.
Thank you, Your Worship. Has Natalie been in contact with the gentleman that you were talking about? And the other thing, Jeff, was there a problem with some of the turbine stuff in the comfit program getting the stuff in the transmission or capacity? Was there not enough capacity in the transmission lines?
Well, that's kind of early part of Evan's presentation is when he showed you the map of Nova Scotia. Maybe you want to throw that back up, Evan. Shows the different color lines for the transmission system. And you see the red lines that come down to our area are actually the smallest transmission lines. And so, I believe, and Evan can clarify, but the size of the wind farm in Puvniko is an example, puts a lot of power on the grid. I don't believe that you could do another Puvniko in this area, given the capacity of the grid. So, the small turbines that we did in Wellington, that power goes on the local grid and is used locally. It's not transmitted outside the area. It's small enough. When you get to a certain size, you need more grid capacity. So, if you think about the Digby Neck installation, and as you go into Digby, where you used to go into Digby on the old road, you saw those new utility poles carrying that new transmission capacity. That's because the capacity wasn't there to support the wind farm. But the economics of it obviously made it make sense to upgrade the transmission system. That, as a private sector initiative, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think that was the municipality of Digby. It's a, you know, major, major project. So, if we had the kind of grid that exists in other parts of the province, I think that we could entertain other projects. Now, having said that, let me throw this out. Area is a group of municipalities that have electric utilities, and they work together to create green energy projects of their own. They actually lease, I believe they lease, they may own property up in, I'm going to say, West Hans or Halifax County. That isn't in any of their jurisdictions, but they have multiple large-scale wind turbines operating there and providing green energy to the grid that's bringing down the cost to their own ratepayers in their local utilities. So, there's ways to be creative with it. And I think by staying close and friendly with Area, we may be able to figure out some ways that as a community, given our limitations on the transmission grid, there may be some way that we can be a player, a bigger player in green energy, maybe not necessarily right in our area.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Your Worship, I was listening to Jeff on this and the others. We've got an installed solar system on the top of the YMCA, which we own now. That installed solar system, according, I know it wasn't working when the Y closed, but according to the property condition survey conducted by Stantec on behalf of the three municipal units in this area, it evaluated the condition of the YMCA. That included the condition of the solar system. Solar panels, as I understand it, are capable of functioning. The controls, electronics, and so on need to be upgraded, but otherwise, it's part of the plan that would be going forward with a rejuvenated Y facility. Won't call it YMCA anymore. Former Y facility. And that's what I understood from it. Now, I asked, I think I asked Mark about it, our engineer, and that's what he indicated to me, that I thought it was shot and gone, but it's not. The actual hardware or the solar panels are in reasonably good condition. So, that's something we ought to be looking at. And coupled with that, has been an idea I've had for years of the possibility of putting an installation adjacent to the treatment plant in Lake George, because we have a large... treatment plant in Lake George, because we have a large piece of land there that juts out into the lake, which wouldn't, and it's located in such a way that it wouldn't be a great bother to neighbors and all of that sort of thing. And, and our treatment plant is our largest electrical consumer. Yes, by far. And if you, you might be able to do a deal with a business, look, uh, we got a customer here, it's us, and if you want to use our land to put up a project, maybe there's a deal could be worked out that would make it attractive to them, notwithstanding that there's no COVID, uh, comment program around. It's something we could look at, I think.
So, Your Worship, if I may, um, I have spoken to Aaron Long at Area about that specific idea, and, uh, so that, that's in, that's in the pipe to be looked at, um, and we sent him some data, some GPS data, because there's issues around proximity to, to homes and that kind of thing. So, uh, that's a work in progress, just exploration. Uh, one of the things that we learned, uh, from, uh, our water utility consultants is that if we were generating revenue from, um, a source other than the water, that is non-regulated revenue, uh, for the utility. And so that would actually give the utility additional flexibility in, in things that it could do beyond what the UARB sort of regulates, yeah.
Good. Go ahead, Deputy.
And that's a question I was going to ask, ask the Chair of the Water Utility, because there was talk, uh, with the former Chair of a, I think, did we look at Jeff or did somebody look at the possibility, I don't know if it was solar, but, uh, but wind project in the Lake George area, because you said, did you see the, the, the waste treatment plant?
I'm talking about Lake George adjacent to the
Yeah, yeah.
Adjacent to the treatment plant.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, good.
We're already doing bio, you know, we're, we're generating enough, uh, we do enough bio.
No, hold.
The sewage treatment plant. Uh, we're generating a significant portion of the power needs for that plant with the methane gases given off by the anaerobic digester down there. And a lot of people don't even know that, so we're, we're not behind the, you know, we've been involved in some of this. Y was involved with solar. Our treatment plant from the day it was built's been involved with the biodigester.
Your Worship, with the things that Counselor Hood has brought up today and what the CAO and Angelique and Evan have said, uh, we had that energy, uh, green sustainability, remember they had a little, um, talk out here, the people wrote here, uh,
Oh, the kids.
Several months ago?
Yes.
There's, I, I think if you put that to paper, you'd be surprised on what the town of Yarmouth has done in regards to, uh, carbon footprint.
You actually did put it to paper.
We did, yeah, but I, I forgot, completely forgot about the one that the Chair of the Water Utility said about the, the gas portion. There, there's a lot of things here, and it's going to be, if you sat down with Natalie, Jeff, Cliff, and everybody and came up with a list, you'd be surprised on, on what we save and what we do produce. So I'm glad that the CAO is, uh, in constant contact, and that'd be exciting out there at Lake George, really would be.
And I, I'd just like to jump in and, and just bring up that, um, part of the work that we've done as well is, um, in defining what unique value proposition we have here in western Nova Scotia. And of course fisheries, um, you know, our natural resources, uh, we have forestry in there as well, and green energy. And we're especially interested in how there is a correlation or how green energy relates to, or how forestry relates to green energy, so that's something that we're actively exploring. But we do recognize that in this end of the province, that we are well-positioned, uh, for green initiatives, and we do already have a tremendous amount of, uh, projects and investments that are, that are working for us. So we recognize that, um, and I think it's important for us to note some of those that you bring forward and just make sure that we have all that information.
CAO, were you going to?
I think it's all an excellent proof of concept, really, and it just goes to show how much more potential there is, just how much has already been done. Excellent.
Uh, Your Worship, I was just going to say that the, the REN's vision is ambitious and, um, a- around this, and I think, uh, you know, if, if we as a region are going to, are going to realize that vision, you know, we have to be, uh, committed to it and, and be, uh, I think Evan, you would, you would probably agree, um, it needs to be with strategic intent, uh, not just, uh, occasional opportunities and small scale. We've got to sell the idea. If you think about people, uh, installing solar panels on their, on their rooftops, uh, there are incentives from the province right now, uh, for that. Um, there, there, we do have an opportunity to do, uh, a, a loan program through the town. We've considered that before and not gone forward. Um, but there, if we're going to be, uh, leaders in this area, if we're going to realize that vision, I think we've got to find ways to champion this whole, this whole area, this initiative, and, uh, you know, if, if Evan, uh, has, uh, has the, the intent to work with all of the municipalities in the region, uh, to see, to realize this, I think that can be an exciting, uh, exciting future.
Sure can. Good. Any more questions for Governor Angelique? Good to go. Thank you so much. Great job.
Perfect. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Um, just one quick thing before I do go, I wanted to ask who I should give presenter rights back to now that I haven't.
Mike? Oh, Lindsey?
So Lindsey?
Just exit, Evan, that'll be fine.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you all very much for your time and your thoughts.
Good. Okay, staff report, CAO report. Any questions for our CAO? Sorry, there Deputy?
Jeff, I saw today, uh, that was sent out on two twenty-one Fore Street that they're doing a shingling project, and we knew that the first of October's coming up for Dangerous and Unsightly. And I actually, before I came here today, went by and drove in the driveway and looked, and they do have staging up at the back, and they do have some, uh, shingles there. But what is the process of they're doing that, and will that, how far will that go in fixing the deficiencies that we've, or the building inspector or the Dangerous and Unsightly enforcement officer has identified? How far will those shingles go? And I'm just wondering if, uh, um, how long they have to put them up, because we gave them a, a timeline, and there's, this is the twenty, what's the date today? Twenty-third and October the first was the deadline. I'm just wondering what the, what the process is, because I know once October the first comes, I'll be receiving a phone call, and I'll be passing it on to you or somebody else about the concerns of the condition of the property and if all the, all the deficiencies have been met. Just because they started, and I think this has happened a couple times, uh, that they've done some, undertaken some work and just kind of maybe walked away from it, so I don't know if new shingles will cover everything that's the problem, but where do we go from October the first on?
Uh, I will take that, that question to the building inspector, to the administrator of Dangerous and Unsightly. I know an order was issued, and it has to be specific in terms of what needs to be done, and the roof was certainly part of that. As you recall, they, I believe they had a tarp on the roof, um, still there, so, um, you know, the fact that they're, they've, uh, started to mobilize on the site, um, that's, that's a promising sign. We'll keep an eye on it, and we'll get a report back to you from the administrator.
Okay, good, thank you. Good. Any more questions for the CAO? Uh, fire, anything? Fire Department? Operational Services, Chad? Anything for Chad there? There's a report. Planning Department, anything for the Planning Department? There's a report there as well. Asset Management and Infrastructure, Mr. Brophy is on the line. Any questions there? Go ahead, Deputy.
Maybe, uh, I actually had an opportunity, I went for a walk, uh, last week, and Mark, our engineer, kind of dragged me up the hill a little bit to look at the Gleep Street project, maybe just get the engineer to give us an overview on that and what, what's, uh, left to be done, because I know they're working on the inside of the structure and putting up the, uh, putting up the door, and, uh, uh, looks really, really, really good. And I didn't realize how big it was underneath. It's gigantic.
Huge.
Yep, thanks for joining me. That was, uh, uh, it's been quite a project, and we're actually took the final stages of it. Uh, we, this started as a demolition, and it would have been reduced parking, uh, retained walls, some ramps, and it, at the end of the day, it would have been less parking than we have now. We, we, we challenged the condition of it, uh, with a consultant, and, uh, as I expected, their, the structure was fine, just needed some, uh, concrete restoration. So we've completed the concrete, that, that restoration, the asphalt, the, uh, the lime painting, and underneath we, we, we put, we put, uh, new lights, uh, new garage door, uh, there's some inches aren't very happy. Uh, there's a steel door back that, 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 going back, but now we've got an asset instead of a, a, basically a filled-in area, and, uh, I know both Chad and Todd are quite excited to how we're going to repurpose this and, and make use of it. So, um, it was, uh, yes, we spent some money, but it's, it's quite a bit less than it was initially planned with the demolition project.
Good.
Maybe just one more quick one.
Sure.
They won't be here for four more years.
You go wrong.
Mark, how is the, uh, I've drove by several times on the top of Haley Road, the new, uh, active transportation trail and new sidewalk in front of the Wesley, and it looks like that went really, really, it looks like it was one day, then the next day it was done. How did that go?
It is done, and even this week, the, the landscaping, which is mulched one side, saw the other side, and the hydroseated, the, the, the damaged areas this morning, that job's done. That's phase one. Phase two, that, that will take, will take us from, uh, gray to stars. Uh, I've got, I've got the concept drawings, uh, just printed back to me today, we can review that, and the idea is to get that shelf ready and, and for, for a spring, spring start down, get us to stars. Uh, Damaris put a number of, of grant applications in, and I know he was successful in the last phase in getting our, all our design costs covered. So, uh, yeah, that, that's phase two, and there's a few more phases on that project.
Good, thank you, I'm good.
Good, any more questions for Mark? Yeah, wow, lots of projects on the go. Okay. Go ahead.
I think we saved north of a million dollars by doing it this way and not doing that, uh, other plan that had the risk of us even encroaching into the graveyard and all of that, uh, might have entailed. A really practical way to deal with a piece of infrastructure that was capable of being restored. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, we good?
There's the, uh, I'm surprised that I, there's no question on the bulk water. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Jerry's on, any questions for Finance?
Mayor, if I can, I'd like to mention a couple things that's going on in the Finance Department, uh, the main one being, um, recently received draft financials for our year-end. Um, and so working with the auditors to get those done, uh, we do have deadlines, uh, in October to report to the province, so not sure if we'll meet that with the consolidated statement, but I'll get all the different draft statements in, uh, and ready to submit soon as the, the finals are in. Uh, one thing to mention that's reflected in this year's statement is an HST audit that the town went through, and I don't know if you folks remember, uh, we went through an HST audit, uh, about a year ago now, and final results came back a few months back. Um, and there was, uh, about seventy-five thousand, uh, in HST adjustments to be made, and then there was about seventy, another seventy-five thousand of penalties and interest. So working with the auditors, we decided to reflect those in this year's, uh, statements or last year's statements, and not do a prior period adjustment, because it opens up another, uh, set of accounting issues I guess to deal with. So, uh, that full amount, uh, we did have a reserve set up of about sixty thousand that we used to go against that, so in our statements, in our draft statements, there's about a ninety-five, ninety-seven thousand dollar, uh, expense reflected in the current year, uh, to do with the HST audit. Now, things that caused that, um, uh, just to put it in perspective, we claim upwards, uh, with a, a low capital year, upwards of a million dollars in, in HST credits. Um, so when you look at an audit that covered about three years' worth of, of claims and, uh, all the transactions we do, um, not, not significant in my opinion, but, uh, you know, one transaction, for instance, that was picked up was an invoice we paid, and the HST wasn't claimed or was claimed on it when it shouldn't have been, and the invoice was for under grants, that was fifteen thousand, and one transaction that was, that was overlooked, uh, three or four years ago. Uh, so we, we did our best we could, we, it started at about, uh, a three hundred thousand dollar bill, uh, between the staff and myself, working with, uh, the HST audit people, uh, we got that down to about seventy-five, uh, plus the interest and penalties. So I did want to mention that, that, uh, the draft statements are in. I know that Gloria will be meeting with the Audit Committee soon, trying to get, uh, finals out. Uh, another thing that we're working on is just the, uh, trying to get, uh, cell phones, it's a small item, but it's, uh, cell phones, it affects a lot of people, so we're converting, converting our cell phone plan, uh, probably save six to ten thousand a year, uh, just by doing that. Um, and then in the current year, we're trying to get caught up, um, and working on that. I think I have July statements now, and, uh, following budget pretty well. A few things of concern, again, the ferry didn't run, um, a few COVID issues, types of things, we reflected in the statements, but not doing too bad at this point, so in the next week or so, I'll have, uh, till the end of August done for sure, and get a, get a draft or a set of statements out to council on that.
So.
Bring it. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's great. So remember the, um, remember the sixty-seven million we got, uh, that's coming down from the federal government, the Safe Start Program? So we're looking, I've just been in meetings all week, probably will be for another week just to see, uh, when that gets rolled out. I know the federal government wants it rolled out quickly, uh, so does the province, so whatever, it'll be close to our numbers. So that's, uh, it's not a lot, but it's a little bit.
Everything helps.
Get us out of the hole. Not that we're in one. Go ahead there, Deputy.
Jerry, for the, you said for penalties and, uh, interest was seventy-five on seventy-five. Was that seventy-five on the three hundred, or did you whittle it down, or does that come down prorated to, to seventy-five? Because if there, go ahead.
The penalties and interest are, are almost, uh, fifty percent of the total bill, which ended up being around, or close to a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, it's kind of interesting that the penalties are, you know, are put in, and the interest is put in back to when the transaction occurred, so all of a sudden, it takes them six years to come audit you, you now owe six years of interest on what was not paid. But we, we put in, uh, we put in a claim to
Shouldn't invest their, shouldn't invest their money with those guys.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Like they talked about us, they talked about us being with overdue accounts usually, I think that's worse, isn't it? So Jerry, is there an appeal process for the, for the interest and penalty portion? Like how often, how often do we get?
Yeah, there's another, there's another form that we filled out, we've sent off, so I'm just, we haven't heard back from that, so as of right now, everything's reflected in the statements. Uh, if we do hear back, then it'd be to our benefit, but, uh, we'll follow up with that.
If your memory serves you right, Jerry, when, so this goes over, what, you said the last six years?
Uh, this, they started the audit as of January of two thousand fourteen, uh, they went up to, it was fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, it was a three-year period.
Is this the first time that they've audited since you've been here for the HST portion? Can you remember?
No, no, it's the second time.
Is it the second time?
Yeah, yeah.
There's got to be a formula or a way, if there's an oversight, Your Worship, for the penalty portion of this to be, it's like excessive. the penalty portion of this to be, it's like excessive. If we know that we're going to be audited every six years or every so many years, there's got to be a formula, a mechanism. I know you don't want to try to pull one over on the government because even if they're coming in to look for things, but I think there's, if Jerry's filled out the paperwork for some kind of appeal or a.
Some kind of relief.
Easy, yeah, I think that's maybe, look at that in the future.
Yeah, keep us posted on that one, Jerry.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, as much as I love the HST audits, I just assume they came in every three years and just did them, and you keep up to date and not have these, you know, penalties and interest that you get charged.
Exactly. Okay, councillor Jim?
Jerry, the reason for the audit this year is the, is the penalty and the, what we have to pay back in the past several years, is that why we're having an audit this year again?
No, no, we, we went through the audit last year, we just had the results about six months ago, and because we do know the results, they're being reflected in our statements to the end of March.
I thought you said in your presentation that we're going to have an audit again this year.
No, in our current, our annual financial audit, they're reflected in the, those statements, this expense will be reflected in those statements.
Thank you.
Good? I didn't realize that went back to me, I thought it was wide shot. Okay. Okay, any more questions for Jerry? Go ahead, councillor Wood.
When was the audit first, audit letter first received by the town?
Trying to think, it was a good 18 months ago is when we started this, at least. It took over a year to, for them to do the audit with the back and forth.
So obviously, 18 months ago, we were notified we were going to be audited. When was it first identified that there was a deficiency on the part of the town?
I can get the exact dates where you don't have the file in front of me, but it's, it was probably a good six or seven months of just information being sent back and forth for them to review, because it was all done electronically. So there was scans and things sent.
Was that amount? Was.
Sorry.
Was that amount, was the initial amount communicated to our auditors during the last fiscal year?
No, it was, it was within the finance department, because we were still working back and forth from the initial, all the transactions that they said they were disallowing. We went and found support and backup for a lot of it, and we were still going back and forth with them, saying, okay, we'll accept that, we'll accept that, we'll accept that. And so we got it down to where it ended up.
So we had a potential $300,000 liability initially, is that correct?
Their, their first report came back with a number similar to that, yes.
And that wasn't reported to our auditors?
No, because we were still working on getting them documentation. That was their initial, it wasn't, it wasn't saying you owe us, they're saying, to date, this is where we are in the file. So we submitted documents to bring, bring it down. So it was only when we, when we were in the final stages that, you know, the auditors, they, they become aware during the years it's finalized.
So town, the council has an audit committee, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
When was it first communicated to the audit committee of council?
Like I say, I, I don't know the documentation. I do know, like I've talked certainly with Jeff, and I don't know if I've mentioned it to.
Was it ever communicated, was it ever communicated to the audit committee of the town?
I can't say for sure. That's why I wanted to make sure I did bring it up, because I don't know if it has for sure, specifically been on an agenda item.
So is this the first time the audit committee is hearing about this? Audit committee consists of some councillors, does it not?
Some councillors, yeah, we meet with Gloria as an audit committee.
Can I ask any of the members of council who are on the audit committee if they've heard about this? Because I'm not on the committee, so I wouldn't hear about it. Are you on the committee? What do you want to do about it? What do you want to do about this? Aren't you concerned about this?
Yes.
What are you going to do about it?
Well, Jerry will meet with us and explain with Gloria.
I have nothing else to ask right now, your worship, because just ask the questions.
Oh, you're on councillor, did you want to, did you need to speak?
I just wanted to say to Cliff that this is the first I've heard of it, and then we'll meet with the audit committee and discuss it when Jerry and Gloria are there, and we'll have more of an idea, but respectfully, this is the first time that I've heard that.
I have to ask the questions and I'm not even on the committee. What's the matter here?
Cliff, I, I was just finding out the news the same as you, and I'm not going to challenge Jerry now, I would rather do it in committee.
I'm not challenging anybody.
Any more questions for Jerry? So we're, we'll set up a, we have to set up an audit committee meeting, obviously.
Yep, yep, now there's statements to look at as well with Gloria.
Okay. Any more questions for Jerry, we good? Okay, thanks Jerry. Yarmouth Recreation, Frank is on the line, and we've got a report here. Any questions for Frank? So the, where did I see the Lake Milo Active Transportation? So what's the, what's that request for proposals look like, Frank?
So that's a project that, a expression of interest for looking at a project along Lake Milo. It's always been an idea, I think there were plans drawn up probably almost 20 years ago now for boardwalk system along the lake. So we've kind of looked at those plans and looking at trying to get requests for proposals to try to enhance the active transportation and connectivity along the Milo stretch. So it's at the planning stages now, we, we just released a expression of interest, we had six engineering firms express interest in the project, and we're just almost completed our terms of reference for our committee. And this is a municipal-led project, and we're going to be, we're going to be having a request of, for proposals going out the end of this month.
Good staff, thank you. Go ahead, Steve, councillor Steve.
Last Wednesday, I believe it was, Frank and myself and a few people met again for the Splash Park Committee up at Milo, and I'd just like to say Frank has given full support to Linda and the job that they're doing, they haven't given up, so they're just revamping and waiting until the election comes up to see how they'll move forward, but a very productive meeting, and that's still on the books, so.
Yeah, I think COVID threw a curveball at them and kind of stalled some of their, their meetings and their plans, but they've got an active Facebook page going, and you know, they're determined to do the things that they need to do, get some information in place, and I think their plan of, is coming up to address the new councils sometime when they're sworn in very early.
Yeah, I don't think it was COVID that threw a, threw a loop into things, so that's good that, that's good that they're waiting. Thanks Frank, that, that Splash Park's important to, to the entire community, this whole end of the province, it's a big deal.
I agree, a community of our size, we, we need one.
We sure do. So to that, CAO, I was going to ask that question, because I have a conversation on that one tomorrow. We have, we committed, obviously, and that's still, we're still good to go. Just need to know where we are, go ahead.
Trying to remember what the commitment was off the top of my head, but.
I can't, I can't remember.
Jerry, do you, Jerry, you're still on the call, do you recall what the commitment was and when it was scheduled? Would have been a capital item, I believe.
I'm not sure, I'll have to look for you, Jeff. Yeah, I'll look and see if I can find it.
Okay.
Yeah, can you, Jerry, can you, I've got a conversation tomorrow around that. Can you, if you find it, can you let me know, or you can hop back on here if you're in your office looking now.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thanks. Okay, any more questions for Frank?
I just thought I'd take the opportunity just to let you know that the backboards have come in for the renovation down at the south basketball slash ball hockey courts, where we were able to, to use the, the uprights that were still there, and we're going with a puckboard type of mold, heavy molded plastic material that will mount some of the existing basketball rims on. So it's going to be a very economical project, it's something that we can do in-house for the install, and so they just came in off the truck today.
Good staff. We good? Thanks Frank. Okay, economic development, Natalie is on with us now, is there anything? Oh, the, any questions for Natalie, and then there's the vacant properties report. Anything for Natalie there?
Your worship, I'd just like to make a comment on my report.
Sure, please.
I just, item two dot, actually, it's the item that's, it's on, I forgot what page number, it's on immigration readiness. So sort of a follow-on to previously with the CEO, Angelique, talking about the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Program. So I just wanted to bring your attention to the fact that there is a forecast that estimates between 108 to 120 new families may be residing in our town, which represents around 250 to 274 new people. And what I highlighted in the report is in speaking with the AIP representative and the D.C. Indianapolis Y Reach Coordinator, we were just reviewing how they do a settlement plan, what is the process. There are significant shortfalls, as we know, in housing, transportation, and childcare to allow for spousal employment. I would like to request if staff can bring forward a recommendation to establish an interim immigrant navigation group until the Western Ren can roll out its immigration pilot program. That could be for a future discussion, but I just wanted to draw your attention to that note that I did in my report.
Thanks Natalie.
If you'd like, I could, if there's no questions on that, I can move forward with the vacant properties condition report.
Go ahead.
So in August, directed the bylaw enforcement officer, we had parking bylaw enforcement officer also helping us to identify those properties that we would consider vacant under the town's bylaw 35. So they did that exercise and identified to date, there was actually 18 on the list, and then we pulled up the previous exercise that was done in 2016, of which there were 62 line items, and so they've been reviewing that, and that is so far added up to a total of 46. There probably may be more as, as they start to do their review of those. So what I provide is kind of identified and the number of years vacant, reason for vacancy and building condition. Under the number of years vacant, we have not kept any formal records with regards to vacancy permits, and so this is really kind of a subjective identification of what the bylaw enforcement officer believes that the building has been vacant, it's been circling town for decades. And so you'll see that 72% of the properties have been vacant for more than two years, two of them are greater than 10 years, one being 15 years and one being 20, and those are commercial properties, commercial buildings. Reason for vacancy, again, we're just gathering this data, and we are formally going out to those properties for them to complete a vacancy permit. But as you can see, we've only recorded one is seasonal, and the majority of them that we've been able to capture the data, it's either for sale or under renovation. And what we did is as we identified these properties, we're reviewing them, what we consider under building conditions as per the bylaw. And so from the fire perspective, they're looking at, is the building secured, meaning no broken windows that would allow someone to enter, or a door that's open, et cetera. So we identified 12 of those properties that are unsecured, the majority of that is broken windows, and so the fire inspector and the building inspector are reviewing those and taking the necessary actions. Under unsightly, we identified one, but what we noted is that a significant amount of those buildings aren't being maintained. I would guess to meet neighborhood standards, but they don't violate our bylaws. Typically, they just need some painting and some maintenance. And we identified one dangerous, Deputy Mayor Phil Mooney spoke, requested information, that was the property that was identified. So what we also identified is that our current bylaw needs another review, there are some shortfalls, I guess, in the current bylaw, it doesn't identify the length of time that a building is, that a building which is not occupied to be vacant, so we don't identify a number, it can't be vacant for, let's say, 90 days, otherwise, can't be unoccupied for greater than 90 days, otherwise it becomes vacant, so we need to review it under those conditions. Also, the registration for a vacant building permit, we don't have that in our bylaw, but we have a, a form that no one knows about. So again, it's, it's some of these shortfalls that we need to look at. So in ending, I know that we've directed the town solicitor to provide some input on the buildings, the abandonment of buildings as per the MGK, so I will be, as a next step, I'll be working with Greg Barrow, our town solicitor, and staff to review the bylaw, and in the immediate, the bylaw enforcement officer is reviewing all vacant properties that are on the lists, as mentioned before, and we'll have an update for the next committee of the whole. And then we're also following up with violation letters to property owners who have not come in to voluntarily to do the boarding up permit. That is all that I have on the report, I'm open for questions.
Yeah, deputy has one.
Yeah, Natalie, what about, do you know the percentage of where these buildings are? I know you mentioned a couple of commercial properties, but do you know if it's like from Albert Street down to the town line going towards San Beach, if there's 20%, and if it's from, you know, you know how we break up the town geographically, do you know the percentages at all?
We did actually do a map, and then as we started to review and. Uh, we did actually do a map and then as we started to review and take things away, I didn't have enough time to get that updated. Um, but I would say that the majority, greater than fifty percent, uh, is, uh, south of Forester.
Okay, and the only other question I have you, have for you is might not be dangerous, but it could be under unsightly and it might not be the building, but it might be the property around the building. We've had the discussion several times and I think it's been brought up by the community in Blooms judges at least twice, is the ditching and the brush around the old Allwood property coming into town?
Um...
What remedy do we have for that, Jeff? Do we have a remedy for that? As I know, coming into town, it's, it's been mentioned, mentioned a couple of times by community in Bloom judges and some other people about the, about the brush in the, in the...
The big building?
Yeah. I know the building, there's not much we can do about it, but the whipper snippering and just cleaning out that ditch is, it looks like, doesn't look the best. Doesn't look the best for coming in, coming into town, especially when we're talking about doing a big project at Mariners Center and wanna be what...
I know they painted it.
Yeah, but it's still...
They did the all hands on deck and...
Yeah.
But that was, uh, that's just paint.
Yeah.
Are we talk, which, sorry, which building are we talking about?
Oh, 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 the building.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's, um, something we can look at. Uh, the ditch obviously is public property, but, uh, uh, most, obviously, everything on the other side, the ditch is, is private property, but we can have, we can have a look at that, uh, as far as communities in Bloom are concerned. I know the building itself has, uh, it's got some issues, Natalie, uh, and, uh, something's gonna have to happen there.
Yeah, I think in the interim, uh, um, we need to secure the property, uh, because the back of the building, um, the walls have collapsed. So I think, uh, in speaking with our bylaw enforcement officer and our building official that we are going to direct them to have the gates closed to the property and secured. Um, and yes, I agree, I will, I will speak with the CAO on next steps to, um, at least make it a little bit more tolerable as we, uh, come into the community from Highway one oh three.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, oh, sorry, go ahead Deputy, and I'll...
And maybe if somebody can have a look at that and, uh, I was just talking to Greg on the side, something I rarely do, Your Worship, only maybe twice in four years that I've done that. I know Natalie's having a conversation with Greg tomorrow. Maybe they can look at, uh, that building in particulars?
Yes, please. That would be great. So he has Deputy Mayor just creates work for our solicitor? And you? This is, um, by the way, I think everybody knows this, but this is your last committee of the whole.
Unless we have some big projects that you have to drag to the end.
I might have to create one. I might have to create one. So, uh, so Natalie, I just, I'll tell you why the, this is important to me too. And it's, it's sort of a sidebar, but, um, I just, just talked to Lindsay today about setting up the, the mayor's task team because we tackle the social issues that belong to the province that don't get looked after, to put it bluntly. Um, so housing is huge. It's not ours to tackle, but we're the ones that see people on the street every day that can't find places to live, stuff like that. So my, my immediate reaction to some of these places being boarded up actually goes straight to, um, is there a way that somebody could purchase them, fix them up and get them rented out, you know, to people in need? Not free, but, you know, to people in need and just create even a, a little bit, even a few more housing units is, is better than what we have. And, um, and, and I know the task team is gonna, i- is literally going to dig up to our waist in that one and see what we can do. Um, I, I know we've got projects on the go. The town has done everything possible on every front when it comes to housing. Um, I'm in constant contact with, with Housing Nova Scotia, like, you know, all those pieces are being done, but, um, I hate to see a place boarded up and nobody using it when we could fix, somebody could fix it up, not us, but someone could fix it up. And I, I guess that's the part that's going through my head. How do you create a community?
Yeah, I think, Your Worship, uh, there are some, um, some creative ideas that other communities have used or, um, or processes that they put in place to minimize abandoned properties or properties not being used to full advantage. I would like to take the time to meet with the town solicitor to, um, to discuss the bylaw and what needs to be improved. But then in addition, uh, to come back with some thoughts that perhaps you could take to your task team and, and that could be brought back to, uh, the council as a whole.
That, that would be great, like, and any little bit helps. And I, and I think, you know, like, even the all hands on deck and the hundred meals, it's just, the idea is there and I think the, what ends up happening sometimes is just, oh, we can't do that, that's too far out of the box. But you know what? We've always made those things happen in this community. Um, if we need money, we got a fundraiser sitting across from me there, Mr. Stevie Barry. And, um, you know, there's, there's just always a way, always a way to get that done. We just need to get more housing stock and every little bit is gonna count. So, yeah, whatever you come up with, let me know. Um, and if you're digging through and you've got, uh, website links or something to communities, I'll certainly reach out to my people, just send them to me and I'll, I'll look at them. Go ahead Deputy.
Do you think, Your Worship, and, and you were at the forefront when the town's task force was put in place and we did the laddering of taxation on commercial properties in the central business district, which was, uh, copied by, um, CBRM, copied by Windsor and Bridgewater and some other municipal units across the province. Do you think there could be a, a same opportunity to do that with abandoned, uh, rental units or abandoned homes?
I think anything's possible.
Jeff, do you see that is, uh, if you have a problem, I can, I, the one I can re- recollect is, for us, is the one on Carlton Street that we could, we couldn't give away.
Yes, yes, yes.
But if we gave it away and then didn't hit them, if they renovated it and made apartments and then brought it up to a certain level, then ladder the taxation in and then you could put something back on the tax rolls instead of having a derelict property in your neighborhood.
So, uh, Your Worship, when we got the authority to, to, um, phase in the, the assessment for development on commercial properties in the central business district, that required a legislative change. Um, it was certainly thinking outside of the box for, for the province to do that, but they did it. And, uh, Zach was our minister at the time and I think it was a progressive move. I think what you're suggesting isn't, uh, isn't a bad idea at all. Uh, and we actually have had success with the, with the downtown program. So I think, uh, going back to the province with that kind of an idea, um, I think it has merit and might be, might be key to actually seeing some changes in some of those buildings. So, um, you know, I would hope that the, uh, the current minister and government would be receptive. Uh, certainly the staff at Municipal Affairs, I find quite progressive. So I think if that's something council wants to do, a motion to, to pursue that would be appropriate, Your Worship.
Oh, good counselor.
Your Worship, uh, we're talking about housing. I have a concern about this. We've been talking about housing for four years. And we have a facility talking about renovating and abandoned facilities. We have a facility in, in, in the form of the YCMHS, the old high school, costing us way north of a hundred thousand dollars a year, keep the lights on. We've had development proposals that are confidential, but they're real for almost all of those four years.
That's our...
And I got the distinct impression from what I've learned now, I'll be careful what I'm gonna say, that ministers in the provincial government these days are not able to tell their bureaucrats what to do. It seems as if maybe, like in Ottawa, everything is concentrated in the premier's office. And likely, if the premier doesn't want it, or is in his group, or just feel he wants to do it, it doesn't happen. It's not just the high school project, the thing like with the ATV, same darn thing. Where's that minister? Surely, a minister has enough power to tell a bureaucrat to fix it. The same with the high school project. I won't say anything about the details of that project, but it's on the cusp of approving fifty-four units of housing in this town. It's been there for three years and nothing's happened. And we've got skin in the game, the town does. There's other parts of that I'd like to talk about, I won't talk about it tonight. I mean, just the whole injustice of ramming that thing down our throats and making us responsible for it. We educated far fewer children from the town than did, than came from the county in that school. And we're stuck with the bill. Just saying, that's all I have to say, Your Worship. I, I, all I have to say, I don't know how you make government move on some of this stuff. I really don't. Thanks.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion...
I'll make a motion to, uh, to ask the provincial department of housing to explore the options for tax laddering agreements for derelict and/or abandoned buildings for housing purposes.
Abandoned or divested?
Or div- ah, very good, okay, or divested.
Okay.
Yeah, for housing purposes, Your Worship.
Seconded by Counselor Jim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you Deputy. Thanks Natalie. Okay, um, be good? Business, Communities in Bloom recommendation. Go ahead there Deputy.
Thank you, Your Worship. This came from the last Communities in Bloom meeting. It says moved by David Solos and seconded by myself. And I was chairing that meeting, so I don't think I seconded it. But I'll make a motion, uh, for council to investigate and/or adopt a bylaw restricting the use of herbicides such as weed begone and Roundup containing potentially harmful chemicals. That's a recommendation from the Communities in Bloom Committee, Your Worship.
Are you a seconder?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion, any discussion?
And I think the most important part of that motion, Your Worship, is to investigate and see what other municipal units are doing across, across the province and where we're going from there. Cause I know there is some, uh, lawsuits and, uh, other things going on with the Roundup situation. So investigate it, that's, that was a concern from the Communities in Bloom group.
Good stuff. Okay, all, many questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, and a request for decision accessibility committee outreach. Natalie? Oh, shoot, I have, uh, hmm, yeah, Natalie, I, uh... I have an application for the accessibility committee. Who's that go to? Yeah, come in, I'll send it to you, it came in to me, but I'll send it to you. Okay, sorry Natalie, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, this request for decision is, uh, to request or recommend to council that in order to, uh, accelerate the establishment of an accessibility advisory committee, um, as we've only received two, maybe three, applications, uh, and we need a total of six, um, appointed citizens, that staff, uh, is able to do a direct outreach, uh, to identify individuals with disabilities and organizations representing persons with disabilities in the community and then bring those, uh, applications to the nominating committee. Um, I, uh, attended yesterday a, um, accessibility, uh, directorate webinar. And one of the things that they identified is that if you haven't received, uh, a lot of interest from your community, that one strategy is to do direct outreach, uh, to organizations, um, or individuals, um, and, uh, to identify those people and work with them to get them on your committee. So hence the recommendation coming to, uh, Town Council today.
Yeah, thanks for that Natalie. It's funny, we got a great big long list of everybody talking about how we're not doing anything on accessibility, but no, nobody's stepping up to the plate to do that. So, uh, mixed messages there, sorry CAO, go ahead. It just, it's aggravating because we're trying to get this up and going, we know it's important. We are following the provincial directives on that. And, and it's one thing if nobody's talking about it, but everyone's talking about it, just not coming to the table. So if it's that big a concern, and it is, we need people to step up. Was that blunt enough? Go ahead CAO.
I think, I think that was plenty blunt. Uh, Your Worship, uh, one of the things that, uh, that I picked up in, in support of Natalie's recommendation here, one of the things I picked up, um, in, in attending presentations by Jerry Post, Jerry was the former, um, uh, head of the, the accessibility secretary. Don Steegan is, is, has replaced him. Was, when they were making their, putting together an advisory committee to government on the legislation, one of the things that they did is they actually reached out to organizations, provincial organizations, uh, representing people with, with disabilities and their interests. And they, they brought them into the, into the accessibility committee. And that, I remember he remarked that that was part of their formula for success. And so I think that's very consistent with what Natalie is, has talked to me about in support of this, uh, recommendation is that we have, we have people who work in this community or people who are involved with organizations that represent people with, with, uh, accessibility challenges. And we should be specifically reaching out to them and, and, and telling them that this is an opportunity to make a difference in the community, community-wide, and to make sure that the interests of their, of their clients are represented. And I think we'll have, uh, we'll have good success if we empower Natalie to do just that.
I, I couldn't agree more. And, and Natalie, I mean, I think we all know, everybody doesn't see the announcements. But I love the idea of reaching out to organizations because I, I think a lot of individuals have seen it. Because I know a lot of individuals have said, you know, why aren't you doing anything about it? So, uh, so we are. And this is really important work that we wanna get done. We're not behind by any stretch, just so, I think you know that Natalie. We're not behind, um, we are following the provincial timeline and everything. It's just a matter of getting the people at the table. So I agree with Jeff, like, it, um, you know, contacting the organizations that represent people is, is really, really, uh, really a good way to go. Sorry, Counselor Jim?
The applications, are they restricted to the, uh, town of Yarmouth or to the, uh, the other sister municipalities?
Are the applications for outside, can you apply from outside the town and beyond this? Is it Yarmouth County?
Well, the plan at this point in time is for the town of Yarmouth. We haven't, uh, created any joint, uh, committee, um, recommendations. I don't know if Frank is, just popped on, maybe he has something to say. Uh, but we did not, uh, we did not, uh, identify in the terms of rather that one has to be a resident of the town. There are many people that work in the town, that use the town amenities, that don't live in the town. So I don't see that as a restriction, as long as they meet all of the other requirements.
Yep.
Yeah, I just thought I'd mention that the municipalities form an accessibility committee as well.
Why don't we just have one committee?
Have one committee, but everybody uses the, yeah. It's a day. It's a day. Okay, we'll get on that, thanks Natalie.
You're welcome. Uh, sorry, is there a motion?
You need that, you need the motion to empower staff to campus for accessibility committee nominations? Moved by Don, seconded by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, there's your motion. Thanks Natalie. Okay, um, correspondence, there's nothing there, no additions? Okay, so we had, we have a tender that we have to okay? Okay. So, can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, okay, so I'm calling a special council meeting to order? We do, I didn't get it. Okay. Yep, okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order to special council meeting, thank you. Our record of attendance, absent with regrets, declarations of conflict of interest, and approval of the agenda, there's only one agenda item, can I have a, a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Don, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, and, this is water utility, okay, so go ahead CAO, because I don't have the...
Your worship, the, the agenda item is to award the Yarmouth Ferry Terminal Work Package Number Four. This is a work package, I wonder if Mark is still on the, on the go-to?
You good, Mark?
He is, maybe Mark would like to address this?
Sure. Yes, the, this package number four for the Stephenor Building, the foundation has already started at the previous package, that was a final foundation. This, this base consists of a wood frame, building to replace the one we tore down during package number one, simple wood frame, slope roof, metal siding, metal roof. Fortunate this time, we got three competitive blind pits, and I'm pretty sure the contractor on site's got some competitive advantages already being there, he was, he was the low again, so recommend we award to the, the low bidder CS construction.
Thank you Mark, any questions for Mark?
Mark, just within the budget, if you're faced with...
I, I'm not, I can't hear you, sorry.
Is that, oh, go ahead.
Is this, is the amount within the budget allocated for this package four?
Very, very close.
So slightly over, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good.
Pick it up on something later?
That's the plan, we, the, the last step will be the canopies for the ticket booths and the pill booths, and we may have to de-scope some of that to keep under the Phase One funding umbrella.
Thank you.
Okay, so it was moved by councillor Don, seconded by deputy mayor, any more discussion? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks folks, thank you Mark.
Your worship, we did have an in-camera discussion that we need to have on a property issue, so while we're in council, if you would like to do that, so we'll have to have people who are not part of this item to log off of the, off the meeting, and Lindsay, if you could lock it once, once people have left the meeting.